Ollie?
Here.
Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here. Thank you. Would you all please stand and join me in the lights?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The last few first commissions of our -- of the month, we've had somebody come and -- somebody or somebodies come and perform for us. We had a very moving Memorial Day ceremony at the Pioneer Community Center -- at Pioneer Community Center, excuse me, the Mount -- the Mount View Cemetery. And it was the -- our national anthem. And I asked Anna Marie Wood, who sang there, if she would mind coming to sing the national anthem so close to Memorial Day. And she was more than willing to. I'd like Anna to come forward. We'll probably come out there and listen to you, too. Now, Oswea?
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Oh, the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rockets were blue, the bombs bursting in air, gay blue through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, doers that star-spangled banner yet wave, Were the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Are you going to sing about yourself or not?
Um, well, I just graduated a year ago from Concordia University, and I'm hoping to go into audiology.
Wow. Yeah? How many -- did we have two full octaves in that song or not?
I try -- I try that.
No matter what key I start in, I can never get -- run up in the right place. Very good. I've got a proclamation to read, a proclamation for the Relay for Life. Whereas Relay for Life is a signature activity of the American Cancer Society and celebrates cancer survivors and caregivers, remembers loved ones lost to the disease, and empowers individuals and communities to fight back against cancer. And whereas money raised during the Relay for Life of Oregon City supports American Cancer Society's mission of saving lives and creating a world with less cancer and more birthdays by helping people stay well, by helping people get well, by finding cures for cancer, and by fighting back. And whereas Relay for Life helped fund more than $150 million in cancer research last year, now therefore I, Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City, do hereby proclaim the week of June 17 through the 24th as Relay for Life Week and encourage citizens to participate in the Relay for Life event at Clackamas Community College on June 23rd and 24th. And as a witness thereof, I have set my hand on the sixth day of June 2012. I'd like to have Teresa, if you care to come up.
This is probably to you, but you might want to talk about what -- where people meet. Of course, it's there at the community college at one time, and I presume you're having the -- what do you call them, luminarys?
Yes.
Yeah. So you might want to talk a little bit about what the -- where the event is.
Thank you. First, I want to thank -- thank you, Mayor Neely and the commission for making this proclamation. As a cancer survivor for six years, the American Cancer Society has provided a lot of support to me, my family, and my caregivers. And it's important to me that we continue to raise funds so as it says that we can celebrate more birthdays and hopefully someday live in a world with less cancer or no cancer at all. As Dot, as Mayor Neely indicated, our Relay for Life event is on June 23rd and 24th, and we hold it every year at Clackamas Community College. We start from 9:00 AM on Saturday, the 23rd, and we go till 9:00 AM on Sunday, the 24th. It's a family event. It is there. We have bands, we have food, music, activities, all kinds of things, all day long. We kick off our event with a survivor walk. We have over 65 registered survivors, and typically we have between 30 and 40 unregistered survivors that participate day of. So we'll have a sea of people in purple shirts celebrating their survival as well as their caregivers. And then, close to sunset, we have what's called the luminary ceremony, where we light bags that surround the track that light our way through the night as we continue our 24-hour walk. And we remember those that either have survived, that are in their battle, or that we've lost to their battle of cancer. So we welcome everyone to participate, everyone from the community, family, friends. Come out for an hour, come out for 10 minutes, come for the full 24 hours if you can and you're so inclined. I thank you.
Luminary, so anybody could come and actually, is there a donation to be done at the time of -- but if you have a -- if you have a relative and so forth, you can get a luminary, write their names on it?
Correct. We have luminary bags available at the Relay for people to decorate. If someone is not so inclined to decorate themselves, we have people that can decorate for them. We ask a donation of $5 per luminary bag. However, you know, if someone said, "I only have a dollar, I have 50 cents," we would do that as well, because we want to just celebrate and remember those in their battle or surviving or, again, that we've lost.
And actually, if you go there in the evening time and luminarys are lit and it's dark and so, it's rather moving. Yeah, it's very moving. Well, thank you very much, Teresa. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to have the annual report from the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee. Go ahead and introduce yourselves.
All right. This is On. Good evening. My name is Mike Mitchell. I'm an Oregon City resident, and I have the distinct honor of being the chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee this year. And I want to thank you on behalf of PrAC for taking a few minutes of your time to hear a little recap of the improvements and upgrades that a wonderful city staff and park staff have been able to make in our parks and recreation facilities over the past year, tell you a little bit about our PrAC goals for the coming year, and then a few other things that are on our radar that haven't really hit the goals list but are still out there. First off, just a little bit about PrAC. We have a full complement of nine members. We have a nice diverse group of people. There's a wide variety of ages, there's a wide variety of interests, there's a wide variety of professional backgrounds. So I think it really leads us to some interesting discussions, a lot of good opinions, and I think it's very helpful for the group, and I think we're doing good things. A little bit about accomplishments over the past year, and I know you know about all these, but I feel they deserve to be mentioned again, because it is an amazing list when you think about the constraints on funding and the constraints on our staffing, what the staff has been able to do over the past year. Just a few of those things. Our completion of the Canema Park Children's Playground. The open house for that is next week, and I hope you can attend. The high school construction class led by Britt Tucker completed the concession buildings and dugouts at Wesley Lynn Park. We completed the sport craft boat ramp replacement, completed renovation of the Carnegie Spray Park, completed a number of upgrades at the pool and at the Pioneer Center, and continued to provide a wide variety of recreation programs, including a new Movies in the Park series at Wesley Lynn Park that was very well received. So that's just a brief list of the things that have happened over the past year. A little bit about PrAC's goals for the next year. There are nine goals on our list. Most of them, I think you've heard about before. A couple of them, I think, will be new to you. We're pleased that all of our goals, we feel, support what you have said as your goals for the commission and for the city over the next year, especially relating to Goal Four, enhancing livability, but also a lot of what parks get involved in enhance Goal Two, economic development, and also Goal One, building a sustainable future. And we feel good that our goals are lining up with yours. So, in no particular order, first off is identify funding for Phase Two and complete development at Wesley Lynn Park. The high school construction class has been able to do an amazing amount of -- amazing amount of projects, really, that are kind of, I guess you could call it Phase 1.5 of that park. The concession stands, the dugouts. One of their two projects the next year, they're going to be covering some existing picnic tables that are at the north end of the developed part of the park. The picnic tables are there, they're going to cover those as one of their projects. And that group not only does amazing work, but the other thing that they are really dialed in on is they're really good at metro enhancement grants.
Yes.
So that helps us. Helps our money go a long ways. So we look forward to them continuing to be involved. There is still Phase -- the actual Phase Two of Wesley Lynn Park, which is extending it out to the north, including the property that we purchased a couple of years ago that the city purchased with the old house on it. Next is determining future plans for the RV Park. Funding has been set aside for a master plan there. We know that there's likely to be -- that that's likely to be expensive, and it's also a little bit challenging because of our little annual or more than once a year flooding. Yeah, more than flooding. So, you know, there's some limitations on what can be done there, but we think that's a unique asset for the metro area. It's a great draw for the city. And we also think there's some revenue enhanced opportunities there if we're able to upgrade that facility. The second project that the high school construction class is going to take on this year is an entrance information fee collection kiosk that'll be at the entrance area. We realize that's out ahead of the master plan, but the way that land kind of lays out, that's where the entrance is going to be, whatever is done. So whatever they do, we'll just roll right into the master plan. Forgot what I was going to say. Okay, so move on. Number three on the list is beginning the master planning for the Glen Oak Road and Filbert Run properties. At staff suggestion, that the master plan for those two be done at the same time, because there's some cost savings that can be realized. But PrAC feels that the Glen Oak property is definitely the top priority in terms of actually building it out, because the Caulfield neighborhood is identified in the master plan as being underserved, the most underserved area in the city. So we'll work on both master plans, but with the plan of building out Glen Oak first. Next on the list is one I know you've heard about before, and that is investigating and pursuing the idea of an off-leash dog park. That one's -- that's a slow one. We wish it could go faster, but we've developed a list of criteria, and when you look at the criteria and the amount of space that's necessary to really do it right, given our climate especially, and the need to be able to make it a year-round facility and not turn into a maintenance nightmare and an unusable thing. It takes a lot of ground, need to minimize the impact on existing park users, minimize the impact on the neighbors. So I guess what I'm saying is it's -- there's not an ideal site that has jumped out. I will tell you that I think some encouraging things are happening recently. There is a private property owner who has come forward and expressed an interest in working with the city to build a dog park on their property. They're supportive of that idea. Staff at Scott Archer has had very preliminary discussions with that property owner, and so far, there's some agreement there. And Scott is investigating some zoning and land use issues that might come along with that. But it is a piece of property that we identified almost from day one as being a desirable site, as a possible dog park. So that's good news. Excuse me. One other -- next goal on the list, number five, is standardizing trail signage and trail linkage. We have an opportunity with existing trails, all the way from the Clackamas River Trail, past Clackamas Park, past John Storm Park, along the River Promenade, up through downtown and what we feel, you know, the old downtown being the center of gravity of the city, sort of, up either the Singer Falls stairs or the elevator, both of which are unique, and then out, either out to promenade to the falls or through the McLaughlin neighborhood, past the McLaughlin House, ending at the Carnegie Center and beyond. It's kind of a -- there's a natural component to that, there's a historical component, there's an urban component, and it's something that we think could be a really unique trail asset to the city if we can sign it and promote it that way, so that people know it's there. I think people may know a lot of those pieces are there, but they haven't thought about it as being a city trail.
In addition to that, I think the -- and we've talked about this, I think, of the city commission, the link -- the missing links between the end of the promenade to Canema, that could be renewed at some point. I mean, what city has the ability to have paths that go from one end of the entire city all the way through the other? And we do, with the exception of some little pieces. And so I think it's really exciting to see the possibility of what could be -- what could be a whole trail system in the city.
I believe there's also in the Jug Handle project, I think the pedestrian improvements there, so it could even loop around to the end of the Oregon Trail Center as a possibility. Which brings me to the next goal, which is number six, which is work with the city in the process of determining use for the end of the Pioneer -- or end of the Oregon Trail Center. We did hear at our last meeting a report from Scott about your recent work session, and we saw some of the materials that you reviewed. And to be perfectly frank, it was met with not a lot of enthusiasm and a pretty fair amount of skepticism. You know, given the funding realities and, you know, the way things are right now, maybe all we can do at this point is kind of have a placeholder sort of a thing going on, but it feels to members of PrAC like we're just kind of kicking the can down the road. And what we're concerned about is that the longer-term planning is still going on, even during this time period of this agreement, because that, again, that's a wonderful asset that we've got, and what's been put forward really doesn't take advantage of it. So I hope it doesn't just get put on the back burner during that process. And whatever planning continues, PrAC definitely wants to be a part of that in any way that we can to support that.
That's great.
Next is to support the Singer Falls project. That is a Rotary Club effort, including the Lee Kelly sculpture that was put in place last year that Lee Kelly himself unveiled, and Mayor Neely was there. Yeah, I'm sorry, I just -- you're memorable, I guess. Easy to spot in a crowd.
That's very true.
I believe that the next phase that they have planned involves lighting either on the path or the falls. Not quite sure on that, but we are fully supportive of Rotary's efforts on that and thank them for that and hope to help them in any way we can. The next two goals, I think, are new ones that you haven't heard before. We have a tremendous park system in the city, and everybody in this room knows about it, but we feel there are a lot of people in the community that don't realize it. So we have started to talk about it and begun to plan and hope to execute early next summer a Parks Open House Day.
Oh, I love that. That's great.
Where we would have city council members, staff members, PrAC members, staff members at the different parks. We hope to have a social media component, whether it would involve the city website, Facebook, Twitter. Geocaching is another thing that's hot out there.
Oh, yeah.
To get people into the parks, not only to take advantage of the asset, but also to try to build a little more support for some financial things that might be coming down the road. So we hope to do that. And the final thing is a PrAC proposal to you. A lot of what we do has impact on what other advisory committees might be doing. We don't really know what they're up to. Scott does, and Scott and Denise do a great job of keeping us filled in with everything they know, but they've got overflowing baskets, and there are all the times there are things going on that we might not know about. So PrAC would like to propose an annual summit meeting of all of the advisory committees, where we would all have an opportunity to meet one another, to share our goals for the next year, talk about the priorities.
Great idea.
So however we can be involved in that, we'd love to do that as well.
Sounds good. That's great. Those are great goals.
Thank you. Very briefly, a couple of more things that are not on our goals specifically, but are points of discussion, things that we talk about. One is supporting the concept of the Parks Maintenance Fee. We know there are political realities and timing realities attendant with that, but however that process is going forward, PrAC would like to be a part of that as well. We think that's a key to our future going forward. A few items of concern on facilities, some things that may have serious implications down the road, the end of the Oregon Trail Center, Irma Tinger House, the need to replace or remodel the restrooms at Rivercrest Park, ongoing facilities issues at the pool, and possible expansion at the Pioneer Center. Those are just things that we know are out there someday. And I'd just like to finish by thanking a few people. Scott Archer and Denise Guy do amazing work. I'm reminded of that Sullivan Show where the guy used to spin the plates on the stick and then down there before another plate hit the ground, and I don't know how they do what they do. And also Rochelle Parsh at the pool, Kathy Wiseman, our Pioneer Center supervisor, Larry Potter, Parks Maintenance Manager. I know you know all these people and all of their staff, but they deserve to be publicly recognized, because, as you all know, we're operating with way less dollars and way less people than would be desirable, and that whole department does great work for the city, and they deserve to be recognized for that.
Thank you.
That's my presentation.
Thank you.
That's great.
I've got a question that -- to Scott. We do have still funds for our allotment from the Metro Open Spaces Funds. Is there a deadline that you know of for?
We're actually going to -- we're going to bring that forward at your next commission meeting.
Okay, very good.
We'll have the -- we'll have an extension of that deadline, and so we're going to be working on kind of a year-by-year deadline at this point.
Okay. Good. The other thing, I'm going to make an announcement, because this is a good time to do it, I'd save it for later on, but on Saturday, June 2nd, was the official opening of the Trolley Trail, which essentially goes from Milwaukee to the edge of Gladstone. They have it all complete except that one segment that goes down to -- going to go down to Glen Echo Road there. And it was a great opening. A lot of people were using it. I went out there to the opening. I found out that I could actually jog the length of it and then walk slowly back. But it was a great opening, and the point is that, my understanding, maybe later this month, the pedestrian bridge that's owned by Water Environmental Services is going to be.
It's open now?
It's open now.
I believe it's open now.
Okay. When I went there about last weekend, it wasn't.
Just opened.
Just opened.
Well, that's good. And that'll be via Gladstone streets, but it's not only a trail system to operate from one end of the Oregon City to the other, but from the southernmost city and the northernmost city along the river in Clackamas County, and ultimately to Portland. So it's -- we see a lot of advances in terms of the trail system throughout the region. I think it's great. Yeah. So thank you very much, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, we come to the point of citizen comments, people wishing to speak on issues that are not otherwise on our agenda, and I have William Gifford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city commissioners. My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. This is softball, so nothing political or economic at all, maybe. Two things. One is, I wanted to give some kudos to our library director, Maureen Cole, who made a presentation to the Citizen Involvement Council Monday night. She did a very fine job, and Paul Edgar's word, she is a class act, and we're very appreciative of her, and thanks for reaching out to the CIC. Second thing is, recently I've had a couple of occasions to be driving down Gaffney Lane between Moalala and Myers. So you turn Fred Myers, Burgerville, you know where this is. There's that little jog there. Then you go down in front of the school, and then that's the piece of property that has been under discussion recently. And then you continue on there. And I know there's been discussion about eventually widening that. And I would want the commission to reconsider widening that. And the reason why is it's -- I typically drive slower than the speed limit anyway, and I'd like the chief to be making note of that.
Do you know it?
Do you give tickets for that?
But it's such -- it's such, hmm, I hate to say natural, but it's pretty -- it's such a convenient, what's the word, traffic calming?
Calming device.
That's the word. Thank you. Traffic calming device that if you're going to do anything with that property, I would just want you to consider to make it a little more attractive, instead of like a big barricade. Just say, you know, slow down and maybe -- maybe make the corners a little more smooth. But I think it's a fine idea to slow things. I don't know, maybe the buses and the school don't like it, because it's too narrow, but I like slow traffic in front of schools. And I just -- it was just at the top of my head, so I just thought of mentioning it.
So you're the kind of guy that promotes?
Re-landing, yeah.
Traffic rage, and you're part of the people behind you.
Traffic rage, yeah. I have a particular finger for the people like that that get too close behind me. That's fine. Doesn't bother me at all.
I have one question.
Please.
You know, we just got a PrAC update on what they've been doing. Do you think CIC could bring something forward to what the CIC's been doing?
It's more harder to do.
We haven't heard anything for quite a while.
I think that's a dandy idea, and as a matter of fact, at our next meeting, which will be July 2nd, no, July 2nd, I believe, we'll try to bring that up to our chair's attention and see if we can't give a status report of what the CIC has been doing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nobody else on, therefore we'll continue on with our adoption of the agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that you desire to have pulled?
Um.
Commissioner Smith?
I don't, but I do want to make sure we just -- maybe this is going to be during manager report, but to address the July 4th meeting.
Okay.
I assume we're going to talk about that.
Yeah, we -- July 4th, and then I think you have -- there's a work session, too, that is also, you may want to consider.
I'm going to ask Commissioner Polly, have you, in your, you know, in your presentations, have we had a restricted covenant non-remuneration agreement while you've been on the commission?
Yes.
Is that familiar to you?
Maybe one.
Maybe one, yeah.
I think one.
One.
And do you understand what they are?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. That'd be the only thing I'd think about, just to make sure we had any of this. Okay, with that, we're going to general -- we're going to general business. Resolution 1214 to allow existing fences as revocable right-of-way permit obstruction for public alley located -- no, dislocated, Pl. 17 Jefferson, that runs behind the church, Pink Church over there, for Atkinson Memorial Church for a five-year extension period. And the person, lead person on this is going to be? Who?
Nancy.
Nancy.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. What we've brought for you tonight is essentially renewing a right-of-way obstruction permit that you approved through Resolution Number 10-23 back in 2010. What this right-of-way obstruction permit allows is to have fencing in an alley that serves the preschool yard by Atkinson Memorial Church. I didn't know if you'd need pictures, so we don't necessarily need to show the pictures, but I have them in case we need them. This may be an area that you're all familiar with, that we -- our staff looked at the alley and determined that it would be appropriate to recommend that you approve a new permit, which would be an extension of the old one, to allow the fence to stay there. And the And the, the only, I think the thing of most significance is there's a existing right-of, or existing alley right-of-way that also has a, it's a 20-foot wide alley right-of-way, and it also has an existing garage that extends quite a ways into it. And it appears as though the existing pavement is sufficient for the purposes it's been serving for many years. One thing that we did do, which is not required, but it became an item that the commission had asked us to do at the last permit, was to send out an announcement to property owners in the area so that they would know what was being proposed for the alleyway. Are there any questions? Do you need to see any photos?
No, I drove down it. There's enough for me to drive down it several times.
When this came to us before, of course, it was a, clearly indicated it was a temporary uh...
Yeah.
Right-of-way, whatever we call it here.
Right-of-way obstruction.
And now you're, now you're talking about extending it five years. Is it essentially gonna become a permanent one?
Yeah, that's my...
Well, there is a time limit on it, and that'll expire, and it would come back to the City Commission again for additional permitting.
I mean, I think by default, it's almost gonna become permanent unless something else happens. I mean, I took that to be a temporary construction easement while they were doing some things there.
Yeah.
And I think this is a little, I think the purpose of this has changed a bit. Now, originally when this came before us, it came through the planning commission first.
Um, I...
I'm almost certain that's correct.
I could ask for Tony, where's Tony? That, I think that the entire site permit, the site plan designer view permit went through planning, but this particular right-of-way obstruction permit came to the City Commission. And in terms of what the use is, that's something that we don't, those are questions for you to ask. And I think that the applicant is here. Do we have applicant here?
I just wanna find out if in fact that construction easement actually came through the planning commission, but you don't think so.
Well, the, the site permit, the site plan permit was a land use permit.
Yeah.
That would've come through the planning department, community development, and I think it went through planning commission. I think it went through historical review, too. My recollection isn't particularly clear on that, but Tony, I know Tony would remember it very well.
Okay.
So then the, is it, the existing alleyway is narrower than what the other ones are because of this? Because it's still seeming pretty wide to me.
Um, than the other ones are. The alleyways in Oregon City vary quite a bit, and many of them have obstructions. Many of them are not permitted obstructions because they've been there forever, and it was probably before we passed our code, and/or they've been, things have been put in them, and we don't have, we don't go around policing the alleys for obstructions unless there's a complaint.
I was seeking recollection, Tony, on this. This originally, I think, was for temporary purposes while they're doing some construction work and so forth. Is that not the case?
This is the fence for the preschool, Atkinson.
If I could just have a couple of minutes, I can find that piece real quick.
Sure. Okay.
So this is what it looks like right now, and the next slide shows the actual alleyway boundaries, the right-of-way boundaries. So there's another significant obstruction.
Yes, there is a significant one, yeah.
And I don't believe there's a permit for that one, but again, that's been there for a long time. We don't go after...
You'll find that the Stevens Crawford, you'll find that the Stevens Crawford House garage is right in.
We only show this to indicate that there's, really, we showed it to show that there are multiple obstructions in this alleyway, and also to show that there is pavement that's wide enough for one car.
You're asking permission to give another obstruction. Anyway, that's what's being requested here. I guess the concern is that, I've seen communities in which alleyways are a very important part of the community.
Mm-hmm.
And ours, ours were put in for access, so I think a lot of the old houses had garage access off the, off the alleyway. I think some still do, but I'm just, I guess my concern is, at one point, it becomes a point that somebody starts asking for the right-of-way to give them back to the property owners. And when you've got these obstructions moving into it, that's a real concern of mine. Whether, whether that serves some general public use is, I think it ought to if they're not, but that's my major concern.
And this is a revocable permit at any time. If the city chose to revoke the permit, this gives you absolute authority to do so.
And they need another five years for construction, or?
I think that might be a question for the applicant.
We'll have him come up, and maybe we'll have him come up now. Tony's still looking, so.
And this is, this is an example of another alley nearby that has obstruction as well. And it's not uncommon.
Is this an applicant in this case? Do you come forward, the requester?
My name is Kelly Sitten. I'm a preschool teacher. I live in Milwaukee. And I think your question is, is it gonna be a permanent? When the construction was occurring with the church and the new wing was added, they weren't really sure where our play area was going to be. Where it is now is pretty much the only place that we're gonna have outdoor play space. The reason we're asking for the few feet that we get is because otherwise our play structure won't fit, and it's really important for little kids to get outside, to use those gross motor skills, the climbing and stuff is very important, so that's why we're asking for the fence to be, be able to stay where it's at.
Yeah, that's the perfect picture. The slide, go back to that.
Go back to the one more.
The slide ends right at the, at the line.
And there's a ramp, yeah, a climbing ramp for the kids that can't do ladders yet.
Right.
So if this is the, this is the only location that the play equipment can go to, is that what you're saying?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. So it's gonna be every five years, you're gonna come back for, ask for another permit?
If that's how it has to be, we probably will, yeah.
I don't know.
We have eight years left on our lease with the church, so, you know, in eight years, they could say they're not re-leasing to us, so I mean, that could be an issue, too, so...
I'd be, I'm more wanting this to be clean. So, Mr. Frazier, can you help me understand why we should do a five-year lease on something that is actually going to be a permanent?
Well, it's not a lease, I don't really mean that.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Well, you know, I would caution you against the temptation, of course, in a situation like this is to vacate or partially vacate permanently.
Yeah.
I'm always cautious to advise you of that because you just never know what the future is.
We have to ask, we ask to get it through a different process for that, too. You gotta Google from all the...
Well, that's true. What you, I mean, if you wanted to, I'm not gonna use this phrase, pass the responsibility to staff, but you could approve this for five years with a renewal for five years based upon a staff determination, and it might make it a little bit more streamlined for the applicant so they don't have to come back. Or three years, because that's the term of their lease. You could also do a partial vacation, although that requires surveying and more expense to the city.
Right.
So...
I'd like to condition this on terms of use as a playground. I think once you've got that, and then, well, the church decides second lease can be used for other purposes, and then the assumption that this is part of the...
Right.
Part of the property, I don't know, part of the effective property. We've got several buildings that extend into our, into our Magawam Promenade area that are actually built over there, too. And I want to make sure that, should this particular use disappear, that they'd have to start the process anew, so I would prefer to tie it to the playground use. Can we do that?
Can we do that?
You can. I'd have to word it, but yes, you can.
Yeah. And so to make, make sure that it's just not assumed by any other subsequent user of the building or the property that it's gonna be, if I, see, if somebody else comes in, we have the five years.
Right.
And something else might happen there that creates a new obstruction.
And that's what my concern is.
And then I wouldn't have a problem doing it on a renewable basis for that specific purpose.
And Mayor, are you talking about that specific purpose by this specific group?
By this specific group.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd feel more comfortable if it were use rather than group.
Okay, well, the place is the playground, the playground.
The playground.
All right. Why don't you put this off to the end of the meeting, and Nancy and I'll work on some more.
Okay. So, do you understand what my concern is?
I understand your concern, yes.
Okay. All right, that means...
I'm about halfway through, I just...
Sorry for calling you back, Tony. We just wanted to make you feel useful.
Thank you.
But you worked.
One night off.
Back to our agenda, then. The next item on the agenda is a resolution modifying the Urban Renewal Commission composition. We have a couple of suggestions as to how this is, might happen, and I believe Eric is the person that's going to take the shots.
I'll take as many as I can. Actually, we are just discovering that the ten-member Urban Renewal Commission was passed both an ordinance and a resolution, and we are, well, we've been advised that the ordinance supersedes the resolution. So I've presented this to you tonight in a resolution. So I think what we're gonna need to do is bring it back in the form of an ordinance, to have a first and second reading. This is a rare case where it's been approved both with ordinance and a resolution, and so that, I apologize, but that was missed.
Does the commission wish to try to reach some agreement on which of the two versions? Because we have to write an ordinance to deal with one of them.
Well, I had, I had a third version. No, the suggestion I was, no, the suggestion I was gonna make, here we've got a question of whether we essentially ended dissolving the current Urban Renewal Commission, and then we've got two people's periods expiring at the end of this year, and so then those two positions come forward, and automatically, at the beginning of next year, becomes a seven-member commission. We are not the commission that are gonna make the appointments, number one. It's gonna be the next commission that's gonna make the appointments. The other thing, although we could solve it by, in either of these cases, by doing a staggered term.
Yeah.
Either of them, whether we pass one or the other, my third idea was to have one of the, one of the seats actually selected, and then delay the, the other two from, the other two would remain until, until their period became finished. It would be, they automatically have the terms. You'd appoint one person at the, at the next time, and then you'd appoint another person when you're, afterwards, when the normal terms expire.
Okay, I'm kinda confused, so let me just see if I have this right. So what you're suggesting is that we have two current commissioners stay on, one will go off at the end of this year?
One position will disappear.
One position will, and the other one will stay on for...
Yeah, a new appointment, yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, my concern is that, you know, in lieu of fairness and open government, I would like to maybe stagger the two appointments. So you would, at the beginning, at the end of the term, or whatever you call it, you would actually, we would actually elect two new, or it could be current, because the current people could reapply, and then stagger their terms. So one will come in for a two-year appointment, and one could come in for a four-year appointment, or however you wanna do that.
However, the next commission would want to do that, yes. I think what, I think it's confusing the audience, but why does it, do you wanna explain the two, the two that are before us, then I can more easily explain what the third is?
The two that are before you, the two options, the first one that's been being proposed is through true attrition. So that would let the terms of the current appointed members expire naturally.
Right, right.
So the first two would expire in 2012, the second two would expire, expire in 2013. The second option is basically terminating all of the, or expiring all the terms at the end of the most senior term. So at the end of 2012, all the terms would be expired for appointed members, so it's virtually wiping the slate clean.
Right.
And in our discussion, staff discussions initially, we were talking about that, and maybe the option, the process option of giving first dibs to the four that were terminated for, to come back for interviews, to be considered for reappointment.
Well, that's the part that I want very clear. I mean, just like when we had Carol Pauley, they all had to go through the process.
Right.
So I don't wanna give preference or favoritism to...
Right, so...
Anybody.
Right.
Because we didn't do that before. We wanna be very open. We did interviews in the public eye, everything like that, so I wanna make sure that we're all on the same team with that one.
And the premise for the second option, if I may add, is we're, we proposed this because of the, kind of the new direction, the new criteria the commission set forth.
Right.
Basing it on expertise as opposed to affiliation. And so that would give you the chance to have two, two new commission members that are selected on that criteria.
Right.
And the process I was talking about would really end up, you'd have a eight-person, one for one year, and then it drops down to a seven.
So you'd have an even number for a seat.
For one year. Now, that's the downside of it, but the upside of it is, yes, there, people know that they have their, their term periods at the beginning for the full term.
Well, we haven't talked about if they're gonna be two-year terms, or three-year terms, or four-year terms, as far as I know, have they?
No. We haven't talked about changing the terms.
Yeah, I just assumed they'd be...
We did mention, though, in the last discussion, I don't have it in front of me, but I recall that we mentioned that at no time would the Urban Renewal Commission be at an even number.
Right.
During this process.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
Most of the discussions we've had about this were about Version 1. And to me, that's the one that I think we need to go with for several reasons. One, it's consistent with everybody. Everyone that was appointed for a specific term fills that term, and then it goes away. The other reason is, there are, some of those positions have been on for a year or more, and where, have been, those individual commissioners have been a huge part of the discussion and decisions that we've made up to this point, and we have some decisions that are in progress that I think warrants them staying through at least the end of their term. So I'm concerned about cutting people's terms so short after they were, or cutting them short after they were appointed to a designated timeframe, and also taking them out of the process that they've been involved in and probably foresaw being a part of until the end of their term. And so I have a real hard time cutting that short. So my preference would still be to stay with Version 1 and let that resolve all of the, resolving that way.
Well, that would, okay, but we still have to stagger the terms, I think, don't we?
In either case, we, either Version 1 or 2, we'd have to stagger the terms.
Yeah, so then at the end, Rocky, what you're saying is, we would have two that would leave at the same time, so I would say that we would open the process up like we did with, when we did the... So I would say that we would open the process up like we did with, when we did the...
So when they're gone, then restructure it.
And have one, have one stay for like two years or something, or, and then the other one for four?
That would be my preference.
Okay. And make sure they're staggered.
Yeah, absolutely.
And two and four would probably be a preferable way of doing it, because each, each commission then has the opportunity of selecting someone.
Right, right.
A three, a three, four, for example, that wouldn't happen.
No, no.
I think option one is more natural, makes more sense.
Okay, I think I have a couple of people from the public, David Prudhoe. It's a nice trail, isn't it?
Great, great trail.
Yes.
Everybody should get out there and use it.
Yeah.
I'm Dave Prudhoe, live in Oregon City. I'd like to speak in favor, as you did and you did, of option one. As most of us here know, there's a lot of political overtones and questions about this. And I think that the two folks that would go at 2013, if you take option one with the attrition, are, are good people. Paul and Phil have expertise and independence of thinking that I think would contribute to the Urban Renewal Commission. And if, if you took option two, and I'm not really clear on your option three, but it would give the appearance, it could look like a politic, political politicization process. And you had spoken about showing preference and favoritism and that kind of thing. And these are citizen volunteers, and I think that they deserve to fulfill their terms and, you know, they're an asset to the community. And I think that would be good to honor that with option number one. Thank you.
Mr. Gifford, William Gifford.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. And I apologize, because I'm suffering from a little allergy. It's not emotional.
No, it's not funny.
It's not emotional. I have no emotions.
National Health always does that to you, right?
Exactly. The structure, the idea behind the restructuring of the Urban Renewal Commission is a sound idea. And one of, one of the things that I wanted to focus on is the new criteria for the appointed positions. The new criteria for the appointed positions are significantly different than the ones that were appointed before. My thinking is that if it's a good idea, and it is, the new criteria and the restructuring, if it's a good idea, when I have a new idea, I like to implement it as soon as possible. And it seems to me as though having a clean slate is a real positive thing, to just start off and say, here's the way it's going to be restructured, and this is the way we're going to do it, and we have new criteria for the appointments. The staggering of two- and four-year terms for these two new appointments is fine. But it seems to me as though, and, and I hear the arguments about, well, they, they've been involved before, yes, they've been involved before. But I mean, when, when you commissioners roll off and your terms are up, you don't say, wait, I just want another year, you know, I just need two more years because I've been working on this project. Well, you know, your term's up.
Well, no, but we're saying finish your term, just like we would finish our term. So we're not saying that at all.
I would say, finish the, I would say, finish the term if, if your basis for being on that commission was consistent with the new criteria. And I think that they were not appointed with that criteria. And I think if you want expertise on the Urban Renewal Commission, which is what I understand the whole process to be, is to get, is to get better urban renewal expertise on the, on the, on the commission, then move quickly, get that expertise on the commission. If you feel that the current commissioners are, already have that expertise, let them apply for it. Let them apply again. There's nothing to stop them from reapplying. I would say, in the positions, appoint two new positions, and have the existing commissioners apply for them. And if you can't find anybody better, then they get reappointed. But that way you've got the clean slate, you've got the, the terms beginning at the same time, and you can stagger them two and four years. I'm just suggesting that you think about the clean slate and let the commissioners reapply if they need to. Who knows, they might want to get out of it.
I'll wait if they're smart.
I would, I would mention, if, if the next commission wanted a new clean slate, they could go ahead and change the resolution, change it and adopt resolution version two if they wanted to next term. Okay, I, I think we've had a dialogue, I'll drop my concept for version three. And we'll talk about only version one, version two.
Tom O'Brien.
Tom, oh, I'm sorry, Tom, please come forward.
Tom O'Brien, Oregon City, just two comments regarding this issue. Number one, if we look to goal five, the second part of that sentence says facilitate citizen participation. I think doing anything other than one sends a bad message to the citizens. Number two, with regards to only focusing on expertise levels, what requirement is there for city commissioners to have that same required level of expertise when it comes to urban renewal issues? Thank you.
I would say, usually I don't respond to comments, I will, I would say this is, this is a mechanism of actually guaranteeing that you have expertise.
Yeah.
Because, most of us don't. Yes, right, right.
Then vote for him.
Yeah, then vote for him. Make sure, make sure, make sure they run and vote for him. With that, I, I see nobody else therefore, do I hear?
One more right there.
Oh, yes, Mr. Fowler.
Good evening, mayors and members of the commission, just real quick. We had quite a bit of discussion about this in the past, and I think making any changes to an existing commission is kind of a tough thing to wrestle with. And I think you really are trying to do the, a thoughtful process without saying existing people aren't qualified, or aren't the experts we want, or, I mean, it's just kind of a dicey, a dicey thing, because they've shown public service and a commitment to serve our city. To the point about getting expertise and the commission, you said it well, Doug, or Mr. Mayor, is that that's, it doesn't come with the position of being a commissioner, so that gives you that opportunity to gain that expertise. Not that you might not have it, but this is that, that mechanism. Because there are some pretty big decisions coming up, I would, I would hope, in the near future, for that urban renewal, I think the sooner that that's availed to the city and the Urban Renewal Agency as a whole, the better, which tends to, to move to two, again, not to offend anyone that's there. But I do like the idea of staggered terms, and I really like the idea of, obviously anybody could reapply, as been stated. So those are just comments, but appreciate the time, thank you.
Thank you.
I think when we put this forward, we were always discussing version two, and version one, excuse me. And as I said, if for some reason people weren't satisfied with what we select, the new commission coming on, they'd be able to change it and hold off making any appointments to the Urban Renewal Commission. So that could be left for subsequent missions, if that would even be an issue. So, any other discussion, or does someone want to put forward a motion? This, we're actually giving direction.
We're just giving direction.
You can either do it by order, or you can adopt one of the resolutions, and we'll take it as your direction.
Yeah. Do I hear a motion to adopt one of the resolutions?
I move to adopt resolution number 12-15.
Which one?
Version one.
Okay.
I second that.
They're both under it. And I got a, a motion and a second for version...
Sorry.
What's that?
I actually made the motion verbally rather than hit the button.
Oh, that's okay. And then Carol, were you the second?
You're on the floor.
Yes.
On the floor, second.
Okay. And now, we've got the motion before us, and so we get to respectively vote. And I will tell you what the votes are afterwards. And it's unanimous, all four agree to adopting the resolution of version one. Okay. With that, I'll go back onto my agenda board here and...
Mayor, so, well, then we come back with an ordinance to re...
Yes, yes.
Just wanted to clarify.
With that, we had a public, a public contract to Kodiak Pacific Construction amount of $379,000, $379 for, for the...
Brilliant.
For the Beaver Creek Road Turn Lane Project. Those don't sound... Yes, massive crusher, $379, $379.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor Neely and Commissioners. This is a project that is a result of a recommendation from the traffic impact study for the red soil, the Camp Clackamas County Red Soils Master Plan, that, and this project, the county, as part of their traffic impact, they put, put money, they deposited money with the city to do this project. And what it, this project does is if you're going eastbound or southbound on Beaver Creek Road, sometimes people think it's south, and sometimes people think it's east. When you're approaching Molalla, right now there are two through lanes and a left turn lane. And the right through lane is where you would make a right turn. This project will be adding another lane, which will be a right, dedicated right turn lane. So after this project's complete, there'll be a right turn lane, two through lanes, and a left turn lane for folks traveling in that direction on Beaver Creek Road. And the reason for that is oftentimes the, the traffic that's going through ends up blocking the folks that want to turn right, to the point where it causes a fair amount of congestion and delay for the right turn movement.
Yes, it does.
Yes.
We have completed the design of this project, and as noted in the report, it is compliant with our transportation system plan. The project was put out to bid, and we received three bids, and the lowest qualified bid, lowest responsible and responsible bid, was submitted by Kodiak Pacific Construction for And we are asking that you award the bid tonight and authorize the city manager to execute the contract agreement with the contractor. I wanted to make a little bit, just a very small note here, that we budgeted $370,000 for this. So we're going to, I'm, there's enough contingency in the Transportation System Development Charge Fund to cover the other $10,000 for this contract amount. And then I wanted you to know as well that there will be additional costs for the construction administration services with an engineering consultant. We'll also be using some of our staff to do the inspecting this summer. So, just so you know, that will be, there will be a slight adjustment in the budget later on in the year for this project.
Now, when you got your budget, I just want to go, make sure I understood what you stated, because we have indicated on our funding source, it is SDC money.
The money from the county was deposited into our SDC account. That's where it's residing.
So...
And we're keeping separate track of that money.
So, so we have county monies and our own SDC money too?
No, this will be all county money. There's still additional county money residing in the SDC account.
Okay, is this, is this, is this monies from before, when we did that intersection, or is this new monies? I mean, when did we get the monies from the county?
When they got their land use approvals and started construction on their red soils campus.
Oh, okay.
So it's that.
I see.
So it's been sitting there a while. Yeah, we've used it on a few other projects, too.
Okay.
We've used it on the Jug Handle Project, 13 improvements, and we used some of it on one of the...
So it wasn't county money, it wasn't county money that was specific to this project, it was county money that was SDCs from the red soils project?
No, they paid SDCs, and they also paid money for specific traffic impacts that they had on the local street system and on the Highway 213 corridor system.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. And while I'm at it, I might mention that therefore you will see construction at this location, starting in about six weeks. It'll take a little while to mobilize and start construction, but, and, and a part of that is there are three trees in that location that will be coming out. They're right next to the fence. In, in fact, they're really crowding, the fence is crowding them, just so you know, those three trees are, will be coming out at the very beginning of the construction. They need to. That's where the future sidewalk will be. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? I hear a motion.
Yes, once I can get there.
Motion to award the public improvement contract to...
Yes. Go ahead, once I get there, I'll...
Or I can...
Okay, go for it, sorry.
Move to, move to approve the award bid to authorize the city manager to execute contract agreement with Kodiak Pacific in the amount of $379,379.
Second.
Any other discussion? Did everybody register? Okay. And it was unanimous vote. I think that's, that we're going now into...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Should we go back to part A?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me.
That's why I was...
If you would call up on your...
That's right, excuse me.
Your charts, the resolution, the draft resolution that's before you...
Mr. Sullivan? Before you read the final recommendation for that, we need to enter three new documents into the record for that resolution. The staff preparing this document realized that the utility pole that used to be there is no longer there, so we revised the drawing and the resolution and the staff report to not include the utility pole.
Right.
Therefore, the basis for this is the revised resolution rather than the original, which I think you have before you. The only change would be made on the very last paragraph, the one that begins with "now therefore..." "Now therefore be it resolved by the City Commission of Oregon City that the extension of ROW permit number RW12-0034 be valid so long as the use of the portion of the adjacent property located at 517 Jefferson Street remain as a playground for the duration of this permit."
Excellent.
Perfect, thank you. So do we need to...
Need to make a motion to adopt the resolution as revised.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt. So moved. Thank you.
Second. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, and now I got to find out where I'm moving.
There you go.
There you move, okay.
This is a slower process than...
Yeah.
Eventually it's going to come up.
It was unanimous.
It was unanimous. My screen doesn't tell me that, but the vote was unanimous.
It's frozen.
There we go, got it.
At, at what point in the procedures do we just simply go to the voice vote? Record it? When Nancy gives up on the technology.
Yeah.
With that, with that being the case, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second?
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm sorry, you're too fast.
Never thought I'd hear that.
Let's just do it right. Move to approve, bye-bye.
Second.
Or was it? I think I did, but I don't know. I can't read the bottom. It says to me that you have seconded, which I presume is me.
I have a... That's the previous one.
So Rocky seconded.
Take the vote.
Commissioner Pauli.
Aye.
Commissioner Mom.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth. Excuse me. Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Neely.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. That, we go to the report of the manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a somewhat lengthy report this evening, and to make it more bearable, I want to bring up first the issues of a July 5 meeting cancellation, the potential of a cancellation of that meeting. It's obviously the day after a holiday, and we've heard from at least one commission member who prefers we cancel that meeting. We don't have a lot on the agenda for that meeting anyway, so that's probably a reasonable thing to consider. Then the second one is a work session on August 7. We also don't have any items on that work session so far, but the big conflict there is it's the same evening as the National Night Out.
Oh.
Which I think many of you like to attend, and many of our staff will be attending as well. So we are recommending cancellation of those two meetings. We need the council's approval to do that.
The 5th and the what?
July 5 council meeting and the August 7 council work session, commission work session.
And the, but we have a city commission meeting July 4 too.
No.
No.
No, it's 4th of July.
Well, I know, but it's scheduled on the calendar, it's July 4 still. And we haven't had that discussion.
Well, we don't have staff.
In the charter, it says when a commission meeting falls on the holiday, it's the next day.
The 5th is what we're talking about.
Yeah, in the charter.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So if we don't have anything...
Do any of the commissioners object to cancellation of those two meetings?
No.
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 Okay. We will cancel them.
Thank you.
Next, I also, I want to call on Eric Underwood to give you an update on three, two things. First, a metro tour of downtown on July 11, and then a report on some economic development incentive programs from Business Oregon. Eric?
Thanks, David. So, we've been approached by Metro and Impact to, well, it's been requested that we host a tour for Impact on July 11 from 5 to 7. The Impact is interested in going out to communities and seeing what type of development is working and what isn't in towns. And I think the mayor had something to do with the influence to bring them out here.
I bet you he does.
I bet he did. But we're very glad to accommodate. We've been coordinating with them and getting that scheduled. So we are currently planning a tour that will start here at City Hall at 5 o'clock, and we'll be walking downtown and showing some of the highlights as far as development and what's working for Oregon City. And all are invited to attend.
Great, thank you.
The second thing I have is just come out. It involves new incentive programs or tools, economic development tools for industrial lands. Or I know that Oregon City is, it's not blessed with a lot of industrial land, but may at some point in the future that might change. But I kind of wanted to kind of announce these and describe them a little bit. And they deal with certified industrial sites. One is on a regional level, regionally certified industrial site, and the other's on a state level. The regional level would show a commitment to industrial development, job creation by the local jurisdiction, and also help the local jurisdiction achieve recognition by the state, which may make us eligible, or the jurisdiction that has these regionally site certified lands, make them eligible for infrastructure improvements and grants later on to entice that development. The other is state certified sites that works to recruit companies to Oregon. And that would, the jurisdictions that do have these state certified sites would receive preference of these businesses or companies that are looking in Oregon to relocate. So they would come to those sites first. And it also deals with streamlined permitting and so forth. So pretty much shovel ready, ready to go once they come in, making it easier for development to occur. So, but that's really it. I just wanted the commission to be aware that those tools are out there.
Great.
I might mention that when the metro considered the regionally, what they were calling regionally significant sites, this was probably five or six years ago. I tried to get our Beaver Creek area on the map, but it didn't come up. A lot of those, after they've looked at them, once they designated as regionally significant, they've actually dropped them from the listing because it didn't meet some of the qualifications they felt they needed to meet. It was a long and broad process on metro's part to identify what they called regionally significant sites. They do impose, metro then, having significant, regionally significant sites, did impose some special restrictions. And one of them that I got on to it was that education land could also be included on regionally significant sites if it in fact was meeting regional job creation needs in the area, regionally.
Right, right. These programs are similar in some respect to that program. However, I think they're not as daunting to apply for and to get sites certified. And they're separating the site certification on two different levels to attract two different markets, so.
Thank you, Eric. Next, your pavement management utility fee is about to be put to work. 'Tis the season for street repairs and overlays, and there's going to be a lot happening. So I'm asking Nancy Crusher to give you a quick rundown on some of those projects.
Thank you. Actually, in your packet under the consent agenda, there was a contract for annual slurry seal work. And in that, there was a map showing the different locations of our slurry seal projects this year. The final schedule for these has not been completed yet. The contractor will be working on his schedule with our crews in the next several weeks. But I did want you to know that this map will be posted online at the Public Corps page. And as you can see, it has segments of streets all over Oregon City that are in need of slurry seal.
Which is great.
And it's also particularly nice to be able to do some work throughout the city because all the citizens pay for the utility fee.
Yes.
And maybe it's unfortunate, though, that we need work all over the city, but anyway, I want you to know that there will be notification to the neighborhoods and to the property owners who will be impacted by this slurry seal on their streets. So this will be coming this summer, probably not till a little later in the summer, but still wanted you to be aware of it. And I did share that with the CIC on Monday night as well. And then a contract that you haven't, that we haven't completed yet, but I also wanted to give you some indication of, where 50% review is some roadway reconstruction. This will be contractor pavement work that will be done later in the summer as well. As you can see, there are sections throughout the city as well, and there'll be quite a bit of work on Molalla Avenue. What we're doing this year is looking at these very carefully to see if there are utility needs that we can do ahead of time. In fact, our crews have been out doing multiple repairs and catch basin replacements and manhole adjustments in preparation for this. The, what I want to note, though, is this isn't final yet because on the next round with our consultant who's doing the preparation of this bid package, they will have our preliminary cost estimate, or engineer's cost estimate, and it could be that some of these drop off until next year based on that cost estimate. But this is again preparation for this summer, and there will be notification signs, advanced construction signs for the public to be aware of what's going on.
Great.
But that's, you know, here we are, beginning of June, and before you know it.
Yeah.
I happened to go to the CIC meeting and saw that map a little bit closer up, and it is a draft, I understand that. You have things like C1 through C something else. Is that simply identification or does that indicate any kind of prioritization?
No, those are just, those will be, those represent page numbers within the set of drawings.
Okay. That's, I was hoping there were prioritizations.
Thank you, Nancy. Next, I want to talk a little bit about the Kenema Children's Park celebration. I also want to offer my compliments to Scott Archer, our Community Services Director in his department, as well as Metro, and also the Kenema Neighborhood Representatives. While the marriage has sometimes been more one of necessity than pure love and affection, it has produced a tremendous park. And I think all of the partners that participated in this really deserve a kudos. There is going to be a celebration from 5 to 7 p.m. on Thursday, June 14. And we wanted to encourage people to walk or bike to Kenema or park at the Museum of the Oregon Territory. There will be shuttles to take you to and from the celebration, but there will be no event parking on the bluff. So we're trying to get that word out. We want everyone to come, but we want them to walk or bike or take the shuttle preferably. There will be guided nature walks, there will be barbecue and pie provided. Feel free to bring additional food. And it says non-alcoholic beverages, picnic blanket and lawn chairs. There will be children's craft activities and demonstrations presented by the Confederated Tribe of the Grand Ron. There will be native music by Niko Wind, and there will be a formal program at 6, which includes Grand Ron honor song and remarks by Oregon City Mayor Doug Neely, Metro Counselor Carlotta Collette, and Grand Ron and Oregon Parks and Recreation Department representatives. So that's a great project, and I encourage everyone to come join us on Thursday, June 14 from 5 to 7. Any questions about that? Okay.
Can we park at Paul's house?
Shall we advertise that on the website? Scott?
You could charge for parking.
So I also wanted to mention that I saw this, I don't know how many of you saw this publication, Willamette Week, but there's an ad in here, and you've heard, you've probably began hearing, there's a pretty good sized ad in here for downtown Oregon City. This is Main Street Oregon City Initiative. I'll pass that around for anyone that wants to look. And many of you, I've even heard OPB advertising our Land of Opportunity Urban Real District Sunday morning during preparation of blueberry pancakes. So it's great to get the word out, and we're just, I'm just glad, I think that's really making Oregon City, it's sort of changing the image. I actually hear this from my colleagues around the metro and other cities, that Oregon City's image as a place that's inviting to economic development is improving in that regard. So I think that's...
That's good.
Also want to mention that Oregon City West Lynn Arch Bridge Grand reopening is approaching. It's still on schedule. The Willamette Falls Area Heritage Coalition, and this is something I really want to share with the commission and make sure you're comfortable with this. When you think about the entities that are involved in that celebration, you have two cities, one state agency that's sort of the lead, and then lots of other stakeholders. And so the Willamette Falls Area Heritage Coalition, because they're comprised of all those stakeholders, seem like the appropriate body to sort of assume the responsibility for planning that event. They've asked me to sign an MOU consenting to them planning it. I think that's a great idea, but I wanted to check with the commission to make sure you didn't have objections. It's a big volunteer effort, actually, and it's going to save us a lot of staff time by not being involved in the planning. Now, as I understand it, both cities on either side of the river will be responsible for their own security. So the police department in Oregon City, well-staffed as it is and well-trained, of course, is ready to step up, but it's going to be, you know, a challenge for them, but most cities are going to supply that, that security on their sides of the event.
And the date's still October?
Well, we don't, they're about to announce a firm date, I think here, any day now, let's see. I think tentatively, it looks like October 15 is what they're shooting for, but I don't think they're really ready to commit to that yet, are they, Nancy? They're not...
June, June.
Yeah, they're going to know by the end of June. So I will actually, at some point, if, unless the council, the commission objects, I'm inclined to sign that MOU to get Willamette Falls the authority to go ahead and plan it. Then they will put together a list of events, and I will get those out to you as soon as they get them to me.
Eric, you're on the board, but are you involved in this particular function?
I'm not on that planning committee.
I would, I would like to recommend, since it's mostly the summer and Rocky's just going to be goofing off anyway. I would like to, I would like to...
Not anymore!
Agree. Memorandum of understanding that Rocky be a participant in those discussions.
Do you, well, I can probably get that in the MOU.
Yeah.
If, that would need to be extended, I think, also to West Lynn for them, if they had somebody that was...
Yeah.
Yeah, there should be someone. At least someone.
I think maybe...
Do we want to say a commissioner from Oregon City, or are we sure?
You can say, you can say a commissioner and all point Rocky.
Okay.
I just, there's some ideas we've been throwing around, and we've actually been sharing them with the, actually, the Heritage Coalition in terms of one of them.
That's great. That's terrific. We will do that. Then the next thing is the library's summer reading program. Maureen, if you're still here and you're willing, I'd like to let Maureen say just a few words about, this is really great stuff. And does anybody, Rocky, do you have one of these?
Yes. Yeah, of course.
Gee, too bad I didn't wear my summer reading T-shirt, which I could model for you. I think that's really actually why CIC was excited about my being there the other day because I modeled.
I think you're right.
So summer reading, you can see the lineup of things we have going on. The sign up started, the summer reading program sign up started last Friday. The programs themselves will start on June 14, and they'll happen every week up until like early August. And so what we're kind of promoting this year is like, you know, spend the day at the library and the park, and we have it set up. We're doing crafts this year, which we have not done yet because we didn't think we had enough space, but we're figuring out more ways to use our space all the time, and, you know, the building may get trashed by the time we leave, but we'll clean it up.
I'm sure you will.
So, so the, there's a program in the, there's storytime in the morning, followed by craft. We're encouraging people to stay and have lunch in the park, and then followed by program at the Pioneer Center in the afternoon, I believe is what it is. And then this year is the first year also that we are doing programs. Three of the programs that we're doing will be duplicated up at Mount Pleasant Elementary for the kids that attend that program up there.
Great.
And of course, could be attended by anybody. So we're trying to get as much participation out of the elementary schools and particularly out of the kids that attend that program up there. So we're very excited to have that started.
That's wonderful.
Yeah. And then a couple of the things, I left you, we started circulating Kindles this week, loaded with 20 identical titles, and the list is on there, and they're all checked out already. You can check them out for two weeks only, and they cannot be renewed, and you cannot place a hold on it or anything like that, so you just get two weeks. Whatever reading you can get done in two weeks, there's 20 titles, and you can go for it. And then after a while, we'll rotate titles. Because there's a lot of people that we see that would really like to try an ebook reader, but they don't necessarily want to buy one. And, you know, also with this way, we kind of get around some of the publishing problems that we're having with ebook publishers are not making all titles available to libraries through the vendor that we have that provides us with titles. So this way, if we buy them ourselves, it doesn't, and load them onto our own ebook reader, we can buy anything we want. It's great. It's like, just like you or me going to Amazon. It's awesome. And then the last thing is, the library board has helped me develop a survey in order to help us put together a strategic plan. This is to collect some information from the public. So check it out, there's, we have a survey online, and we'll have that up probably most of the summer, so that we can have a good long time to collect information, which will help us inform our strategic plan, which will help us design the best possible building that we can for Oregon City.
I love it.
Thank you very much.
Before you leave, the CIC is not the only group that says good things about you.
Oh, do tell.
Now, this is Russell heads up the organization called Oregon City Together, which focuses on dealing with issues, youth issues in terms of alcohol and drug abuse. Our school resource officer and I am a member of that particular group. They were putting... They were putting together, they are putting together and it's going to be released in a couple of weeks, a list of free activities for teens during the summer months. I had sent certain pieces of the Trail News to her, both dealing with the parks program and the recreation program. And Elizabeth has been talking directly to you and was very pleased that you said there were other activities other than those that I'd given you that were probably, were going to be coming on. And so, I think she'll have a lot of resources that come out of Oregon City that yous can participate in during the summer months.
Excellent. We're trying to grow more teen activities all the time. We had YouTube viewing night the other day, so they brought ideas for their best, the videos that they liked and of course, there was a little, some criteria, which were followed. And then like this Sunday, we're having teen craft afternoon and they're going to make duct tape wallets. So, we're trying to grow those activities for that age group and it's really fun.
That's good.
She did not say you rock though.
Well, she will.
And I just want to say our summer reading program is great. Our kids do it every year and they, just that goodie bag is that instead of that. It really takes that carrot out there to get them reading and they just bloom last summer.
So, a goodie bag full of carrots and they really like it?
No.
Thank you Carol.
And you had taught previously about connecting with the schools and promoting the summer reading program.
Right.
How has that gone this year?
Well, it's going to be interesting to see. The, our, the media specialist up there and all of a sudden, Jan Snyder, she took the materials and she distributed them. So, we know that every child has been given the information, but you know how stuff ends up in backpacks, never to be seen of from again. So, we'll see like how many of those people like actually bring their kids into the library and do signups. And next year, I think we need to do a little bit more hands-on approach. I think we need to be at the schools and actually sign them up in person then.
I'll help.
So, okay, awesome, you're on. I think it'd be fun too.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you Maureen.
Thanks.
And then the commission saw, I think, my press release on the downtown parking improvements.
Yeah.
I've had a lot, actually quite a bit of positive feedback on this and no negative feedback so far. So, I'm taking that as a good sign. I really want to thank Mike Conrad and his staff for their help on that. And then Nancy had two more things.
There are two open houses coming up that you might be interested in attending.
There will be two open houses coming up that you may be interested in attending. The first is on June 18th, which is a Monday night at City Hall here. It'll be the TSP open house. And this will be open house number two from 5:00 to 7:00, June 18th at City Hall. The next one is the following evening at the Pioneer Community Center. And this will be, that would be Tuesday, June 19th from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. That open house is being sponsored by ODOT and they will be going over, they'll be there to answer questions and provide information on the paving project that's going to be occurring between 10th Street and Canby this summer. So, that, I wanted to make sure you're aware of those.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then last but not least, more and more of our senior staff on the executive team have been showing interest in civic clubs and service and civic clubs and groups in Oregon City that aren't part of their job, but it's just part of their, I think their passion for Oregon City. And today, Maureen Cole was my guest at Rotary. And I have a little bit of information from our meeting today at Rotary, so I wanted to ask commissioners or members of the audience, what important thing happened this day in history?
Yo-yo. Yes. Yo-yo was invented on this day in history.
That's right. D-Day. D-Day happened 68 years ago today. And in the invasion, there were 176,000 allied troops that actually stormed the beaches. 155,000 were actually on the beaches. 6,000 landing craft, 13,000 aircraft. There were 18,000 parachutists. Allied forces lost that day, estimated to be 4,200 confirmed and up to 5,000. And just a week before D-Day, 19,000 French citizens were killed by bombing. So, we were there for a reason. And I think it's just good to remember that kind of stuff, because when we say our pledge, that meeting's on a day like this, it's just really a special time for us. So, just wanted to give a shout out to our veterans. That's all I have tonight.
There's a series, I think it's still going on, they have indicated, called The War, and they were talking about World War II on OPB. It is a very moving series. Oftentimes, you know, we, we talk about the loss of lives of American troops, but World War II, more lives were lost in that war than any other war. Even though that they were adversary after the war, Soviet Union lost 21 million people total.
Unbelievable.
Two-thirds of them were civilians. And so, so, and of course, the loss of lives around Asia and Pacific, Europe were tremendous. And oftentimes, I don't, sometimes I don't think we, the reason that we're a great industrial giant is because that war did not affect our homeland, other than Hawaii.
Yep.
And our industry built up greatly during that period of time. A lot of people ask the question, well, you know, why, why are we so concerned about foreign affairs and these kinds of things? Well, for one thing, that war devastated most of the world. It did not devastate North America. And I think the fact that we were able to come out of it well, gave us the responsibility really of trying to assure that the nations of Europe, of Asia and Africa, they succeed in their economies as well.
You know, Mayor, it makes you think of that quote, that as soon as we forget history, we repeat it. So, it's good not to forget.
I was going to make a suggestion for the next commission meeting. Oftentimes, we say these, save these things up for the announcements. I, I think some of these announcements would be best made at the beginning when we have more people here. I was thinking specifically perhaps of the library events, but maybe at the next meeting, the concerts in the parks and the movies, since I think that's the last meeting we're going to have before they start. Maybe we, we announce them at the, at the head of the meeting.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. Got a few announcements, Rocky and I are going to share a few, but I had already mentioned too, the Urban Renewal Commission, the Main Street program that we're having. And then Eric has talked about that as well.
That's July 11th.
July 11th, and that's the second Wednesday. Before the beginning of the summer, they tried to plan some tours and they were looking for recommendations of what tours to take. I'd been on a couple of them last summer and they were very informative. And, and since we're doing good things, even though, in fact, I think it's, I think it's a good thing we're doing it before the Main Street program's completed. I think it's, it's far more meaningful to them seeing a event in process too. So, anybody that can come are welcome to, it's open to the public that we're walking through Main Street. I think the other things that I have here are things that both Rocky and I attended and I'll go ahead and have Rocky talk about them. But one thing I wanted to make a comment up, that came up at the last Metro Policy Advisory Committee, was that they were talking about the 200 places in the world that are, their economies are growing very, very rapidly. There's 200 of them and only 20 of them are located in North America and Western Europe. And we're getting, we're getting behind in many, many ways. And, and we're not one, incidentally Portland region is not one of the 20 either. So, it's important that we look at our industrial lands very carefully. Look at also agriculture very carefully. Coquettius County is a tremendous exporter of agricultural products. And how Oregon City can both industrially contribute, but because of our location next to the agricultural lands, how we can contribute to increasing the production in this area. And with that, Rocky, you want to go next?
Sure. I have a sort of small list. But the first thing I wanted to talk about was in a major, huge event that happened at our school. And most of you know about this. We have very few male championships at our school. But this was a huge one. This was absolutely amazing and most of you know. The baseball team at Oregon City High School, I think at one point in the season was ranked 20-something in the state. There was really no thought to, even at the school level or, well, I'm sure the team had some thoughts about it maybe, but they kind of came in under the radar and no one was expecting them to do as well as they did. They played Roseburg and, which was the number one team in the semi, in the semifinals and beat them. And played the number two team for the state title and beat them. And it was, for someone that has attended Oregon City High School, taught at Oregon City High School and been part of that, that history for the last 20, 20 years almost, this was huge. This was just an amazing event at our school and it really, unfortunately, it came a little bit towards the end of the year, so we actually, they created an assembly. We had an assembly on, was it yesterday?
Yes.
We had an assembly yesterday, it was the last full day for students. And so, the assembly was at the end of the day, so you can imagine some students went home. Quite a few. But it was, it was a great event. They had a big assembly and, and the entire baseball team came in on a fleet of motorcycles into the gym. But it was really, it was really amazing. It was, it was kind of brought back full circle, the history to some degree of the high school. And some of you may or may not know this, but Mike Lord, who was one of the assistant coaches, graduated Oregon City High School the same year I did. One of the other assistant coaches of Brent Heron, who also graduated the same year I did. There's three or four, let's see, there's, I hope I don't forget somebody. I think there's three or four of us also teaching now, I guess Mike would make four, that are now teaching at the high school that all graduated in 1995. Head coach, of course, is Greg Lord, who is Mike Lord's dad, who was coach and teacher. When I was a student at the high school, both Mike and Greg left for some time across the river and were at West Lynn. And that kind of played into this whole history of the West Lynn rivalry and them always being from Oregon City. So, they're back in Oregon City and unbelievable way to come back. So, this, I think it says that finally, they're back in the right place again. And I'm so thankful that they are and congratulations to all of them. The construction classes, the PRAC report on the construction project at Wesley Lynn Park, both me and the mayor attended that presentation. There was a reception for those students. Britt Tucker at the high school had a great program set up, a lot of parents there. Some staff members, some school board members were there. And all the kids. And I was pretty amazed by the fact that as a teacher, you have, there are different areas of the school, athletic activities, clubs, sports, and, and kids tend to stay in certain communities in the school. Sometimes they cross, cross into other realms. And I was really impressed to see them all, all these students in the construction program standing there. Because I've, I've had probably, boy, a third or half of them in my class over the last few years. Just amazing kids and amazing program. And I, I'm kind of disappointed, I think sometimes when I go to this, this amazing event, that there are not more people from the school, even in our own school, teachers. But I don't really know, do they know how incredible this is? So, if you've, if you live in Oregon City and you've not spent any time in that park, it's unbelievable. It's absolutely unbelievable. It's, it's an amazing park and it's, it's something that we can really be proud of. And thanks to Scott and the rest of the Parks Department for allowing that partnership to just become something that's absolutely amazing and every city should be doing. Some sad events this week and this was a tough one. King School had their event on Monday night. And Mount Pleasant had their event tonight for the closing of those two schools, which are a huge part of Oregon City. King Schools event, King Schools has been operating for 32 years. And I didn't attend King School, but I did help a little bit with some art things there at one time and have a connection, my family has a huge connection to King School. And Mount Pleasant from 1856, one of our oldest schools in the history of that school is amazing. It was my school and so, I attended that, as do the mayor tonight. They, they've done an incredible job of creating a documentary that is, they showed a snippet of it tonight. It's going to be much longer, I think it's a 27 minutes or something like that, but it's going to be a full documentary. People sharing their memories and stories about the history of the school. I was able to participate in that and it was really well, really well done, really well done. And it's exciting to see what the future might hold for that building. And I think one of the things is, I was talking, when we put these opening and closing dates on things, it's a little deceiving, because we've closed a lot of schools in Oregon City, but they're all open. And they're all active. And so, they don't really close. And I think that makes it, as hard as it is, I think it makes it a little easier to know that they do come back in, in different forms sometimes, or they will come back in the future as, as schools again. So, thank, I just guess, these, these, all of these events were kind of reunions of just how amazing this community is. And seeing my elementary school teacher and, which I see her frequently, but several of the teachers at the, at Mount Pleasant that have been there for, you know, 15, 20 or 30 years. And they are still there and still working. And kind of came full circle again. My kindergarten teacher, I actually, this is Ms. Sterns by the way, at Mount Pleasant, and was able to have her daughter in my class at the high school. So, it's kind of been neat to see that. And I think that's, the one last thing I will say without going on too much longer is, thank you to all the city departments. The festival, Pioneer Family Festival's over, it's done. And so many people helped in, in the city making that happen. Parks Department, Public Works with the parade and Police Department and Code Enforcement, parking signs and just amazing. And it was well-attended and it went off without, without any hitch. It actually was quite easy this year.
That's good.
So, that's it. I think that's it.
Anybody else?
Carol, you want to go?
Sure. Um, just my kind of outings, general outings where got to see lots of Oregon City citizens out. The Memorial Day Celebration at the cemetery was wonderful. I don't know if it was a record number of people, but they were utilizing their overflow parking quite well. It was, it was wonderful. We attended the farmer's market. There, we got about two feet before we ran into somebody we, we knew. And I got my strawberries at the very beginning. Next time, I'll get them at the end, because I'm carrying around this thing of strawberries. But anyway, it was just great to see everybody out and about. A lot of vendors at the farmer's market, looks very healthy. And then we went to the Museum of the Oregon Territory. They had their Falcon program there. They had a couple Falcons. They had a couple Falcons. And it was very interesting. And again, it was well-attended. It was very, lots of citizens there. So some great programs going on. That's all I have?
Well, I just have a couple. Rocky took one about the baseball team. I had a proud mom that emailed me and said, "They were ranked 22nd and they defeated three number one seeds." Is that seed? I don't know. Players to win. I mean, that's just amazing.
It's amazing.
Wonderful. Memorial Service up at Mountain View Cemetery was awesome. Eric looked sharp carrying the little wreath down there. That was great. Loved it. Let's see, what else do I have down here? My other hat, that I am paid for is I work for Providence School at Fort Hospital and Medical Center. And they are looking to open a new inpatient child and adolescent psychiatric services, serving patient, people, children from three to 17 in the fall of 2013. This is going to be above what is currently the emergency department. There's an open shell up there and so they're going to do an inpatient service there. This is coming out of Providence, Portland location. Great connection because the Children's Center is right here and then, I mean, I think it's going to be a great connection for us. At one time, somebody had thought we were going to be building, Providence would be building something down here off of Abernathy and I was told today, no, that's not going to happen. And another hat, the C4 meeting is tomorrow. And thank you Nancy for doing that project that I volunteered her for and forgot to tell her about. And then David Frase says, "Patty, that's not like you." They received an email before I got to tell anybody I volunteered them to do this project. And so Nancy's going to present to at C4 tomorrow. And it's a project talking about the Clackamas County, looking at a regional transportation fee system of some sort. So we'll be up there presenting tomorrow night. So I think that's all I have.
I'm going to come back to a couple of things. First of all, you didn't say how I looked at the ceremony at the memorial.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You were just so handsome.
That's good. Thank you. Nobody, nobody, nobody here ever sees me in a suit and tie. And I do want to mention that I do occasionally wear one.
I totally forgot. Excuse me, Mayor.
The suit, the suit I bought the first day I came on to the city commission 60 years ago. Anyway. The Memorial Service had something that I've not seen before and if somebody knows where they came from, I'd like to know. We had to fly by from the Air, the Air National Guard. Later, a couple of the jets came by. But earlier on, we had five propeller planes. They looked like they might have been reproductions of World War II planes flew over and then they flew back. I don't know whose planes they were and if anybody can research that up, that was, that was really, that was really nice because they flew low over the cemetery. And I don't know what they were. I did want to mention another thing connected to that because we, and it's connected to another thing I would talk about too. We had our Metro Enhancement Awards made by the, by our, by the board that we have here that distributes the money from the tipping fees that the city gets from the transfer station down here next to 205 and 213. One of the recipients, they'd been here three times, two, two times before. One of the recipients was the Parents of Murdered Children. They've been gathering money to have a memorial just north of the Veterans Memorial Site there at the, at the Mountain View Cemetery. And I was very pleased that we were able to contribute, what probably amounts to something like 10% or so, 10 to 15% of the funds that they, they need for. They've gathered, I think, almost all the other funds and I think over the next year or two, we're going to see a, a very nice memorial to, to, to the, that the Parents of Murdered Children have had. They, they decided to select Oregon City as the site in this area. I don't think there's any other one in Oregon that I'm aware of.
Or I think that's, this is the first one in the Pacific Northwest.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I mentioned there at the, at the, at the meeting where we made those awards, the tremendous impact it had on the city here when we had the murders of Ashley Pond and Miranda. Gaddis, thank you. Miranda Gaddis. It just, the Police Department was just, of course, very involved in that, but the, the tension that they were under, under those conditions was so great. And the two girls were not served well. They had, Ashley Pond had indicated that she was, to one of the counselors there, I think, at the school, that she had, was being sexually molested. And they reported to Human Services, but the police never, Police Department's never found that out. And then later on, the murders occurred, probably associated with her, the possibility of the person being identified. But it, I was actually pleased that she goes Oregon City for the site because it was, it was such a trying time for us at that particular time. Another, the, another award, and one of the other awards that was given was for the Oregon City High School construction class. And we had on the first, we, we actually, Rocky was there with me, but we actually presented some certificates to the individual students that participated in it. But if you have a chance, particularly, you see most of the structures there at Wesley Lynn Park, but there are structures, I think, at-
Huh? They've done some stuff at Hillendale?
Yeah, Hillendale. Yeah.
As well.
But they, you go there and those are, those are extremely professional looking things. Michelle Bendel, who administrates the program for the city, she was there with her husband. Her husband's an engineer, he's former city commissioner, incidentally, but he's a husband, he's an engineer with Hobman Construction. He went around to the individual students that had display boards up and was, were asking them very good questions, so they, they got to think and so forth. It was a very, very good program. The other thing I had forgot to mention, I mentioned that the Urban Renewal Commission was the opening of the Trolley Trail. I don't think I mentioned it here with the city commission, but the official opening of the Trolley Trail, which extends from Milwaukee to Gladstone, officially opened up this last Saturday and it was a well-attended event. They had one of the trolleys there, not running, but they brought it in on a trolley. And our trolleys don't look like those old trolleys, do they? Very different. But I remember as a youth on several occasions, on three occasions, coming into Oregon City from Portland on that trolley line. So that's opened up and we're going to have tremendous connections throughout the area because of that. Extending right into Oregon City, across the pedestrian bridge that you tell me is open now. So anyway, that's it for me. So is that it for everybody?
That's it.
That's it.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.